I call the order, I call to order the Board of Trustees regular meeting for February 14th. I'm sorry, it's a regular special meeting for February 14th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 p.m. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the implication?
Sure. Stand by your hands with me. Dear Lord, thank you for an attachment. Thank you for the citizens here, and thank you for the freedoms that you've given our country. Pray for the men who have given their lives for that, and we remember them, that we remember those who are serving us now and are protecting us, and we do with their failures. Amen.
Please join me with an electrical meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Mickey?
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just ask why there was no participation in the full board on this As the parliamentarian had indicated, that it's just proper courtesy and procedure to forward drafts of the agenda to the full board, ask for their input, and that's not being done. Again, I've asked for one item to be on the agenda, and it's refused, and I believe that is improper.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes. I move to set a limit of not more than one speech of three minutes length on the same question on the same day for each trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, again, as stated before, I have no problem with limiting the discussion. However, there tends to be zero discussion, and a limit of one time is not a discussion, but a statement. Additionally, why is there a reason to place this on every agenda item? I think we should be able to figure out that for the sake of this board, that the board just adopts it, and then that's the rule moving on. It seems a little redundant to waste the time every meeting.
Roll call Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes for the December 20th, 2022 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, again, I would state that these minutes do not properly reflect the board's business, as they do not contain the motions made per our adoption of the Roberts rules. If we're going to have the rules, we should follow them. So I would insist that they be included or that they not be certified if passed without.
Die for lack of a second. Roll call Mrs. Varian.
Didn't die.
You didn't make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't make a motion?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Officer, roll call. Mark Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes, I'm sorry. Public comments are limited to items on the agenda since this is a special meeting and three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and please state your name and your address for the.
We're recording again.
I move to come out executive session, and the time is, is that 7:35? 7:35. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes. I move to go into executive session per Ohio revise code 121.22G1 for the purpose of discussing the appointment and/or employment of a public employee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No, you did not read the full thing, so if you're going to interview or something, should we state that?
No.
Okay.
Discussion? Trustee Johnson? Trustee Evans?
Yes, if we're not interviewing, I'm not sure what we're doing.
Again, this came directly from the Ohio revise code. Is there an interview candidate for the trustee administrator? So we're going to go into executive session, and the time is 31.
And we're not. Well, we didn't vote. And my question is, so we're not interviewing?
Roll call Mr. Mrs. Mrs. Varian.
I'm still discussing. So we're not interviewing? We're just discussing. We're not interviewing.
We are going into executive session for the purpose of discussion and appointment for an interview. Okay, this came directly from the Ohio revise code. Mrs. Varian?
No, but my question is, are we interviewing or not?
This is an interview, Mr. Evans. You knew that it was.
No, I didn't know.
Yes, it did. Okay. Again, we're going to move forward. Mrs. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes. And the interview, the time is 7:32.
37, man.
I'm sorry, 37. Okay, thank you. I move to come out executive session, and the time is 9:01.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes, 9:01.
I missed the airport. I was there, yeah, close to the time.
Isn't Pickerington's open until, I think, 10?
I wasn't. Well, two minutes.
I don't want to drive to Pickerington.
I.
I gotta go that way.
Well, when you, when you need to go, you got, you know. What I mean is open too.
Twisted Ogre shot, 484 Trail West. The one thing I had, Licking Park District, on the original agenda that came out, it said the road extension. That road extension was the same one that we voted, the township voted down last year and now up for business discussion again. My thing is, the Licking Park District wants it, they should pay for the road extension along with the maintenance of that extension. That way, the cost is, transports the entire Licking County and not borne by just the added township members because of the fact that the entire county would be using it, along with people outside the county probably. The second thing I wanted to point out on motion to approve paying for lunch for the JED and JED Z-ports, excuse me, why are they having meetings during lunch, number one, and two, why aren't they paying for their own lunch? If they ever have a meeting during lunchtime, they can bring their own lunches. Why are we whining and dining them? And then the third, under the old business, I'm glad we're getting to finally look at purchasing the libel family property so that we can create the park that's been promised for years. I did see that one thing was missing from our own business would be the update on the Skidout property and their violations and what's going on with that. Thank you.
Johnny Cerrance, 9617 Windsor Road. I know you said it only had to retain to the agenda, but it has. Since Mr. Vance is actually leaving us, I just, that's what I wanted to find out was, that's why I came here tonight, because I know he was going to be leaving us, and I just wanted to find out where he was at with the Skidout issue.
Okay, it's not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Well, that's the reason why I was asking, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnny. Appreciate being polite.
I was hoping to get an answer.
Again, on special meetings, you can't go outside of. It's serious. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on over to new business, which will bring up the Licking Park District. There's several things in regards to that. One of them, there's a grant. I was able to meet with the director over there. The day after the meeting, I understood it was others that showed up at that meeting, which was supposed to have been for elected officials or people from the township or the county, but it wasn't for residents. So I went over and met with them, and there is a grant that they're going to offer us, and there's several townships and cities on it, and it's money towards the park. And the good news is, the money, if we don't get it this year, which is 2023, it rolls over to next year. They are asking that we will be able to do 50% of whatever we ask for the grant. And there's an application here. I don't know if the other trustees, you guys get one of these emails to you? You did?
I got the information.
Oh, no, you got a quote line that he just showed up?
No, I didn't.
Okay. So, did you get your copy, Jeff, of this Licking Park District? All right, we'll see an application. Didn't have the new packet?
Didn't have my packet? It wasn't.
They're not under that. I thought we were discussing the freeway drive.
No, there's several things we were discussing. Did say another one. Keep having. This is a government partner funding application. The way they call it partners because they are looking that the county, I mean, the township will provide 50% of what they offer. Again, like I mentioned before, it rolls over to the next year. If we can't get it this year, we can get it next year. The maximum that they're giving us, and it's based on the population, and it looks like we're allowed to get $79,386.51. And we, again, we can match it. So I'm excited about that. It's several things that it can go towards. There is a, I was hoping we had that ahead of time, so it sounds like we did. There are some dues in balance for what they will provide ineligible project costs as well as eligible projects, so all that's there in that application. And this can be used towards our new park. There's several things there, dog park facility, bathroom, picnic shelters, parking lots, restrooms. There's quite a bit of things here that we can ask for, for the park. So I'm excited about that. That's at least something that we can apply for year to year, and it's good up until 2027. Let me compare that.
That's 2027.
Yeah.
That'd be paid for by the.
That's right. But it rolls over, you don't use it this year, it rolls over to next year, and then continues on to 2027. And then at the end, if there's money still left over in the funds, that we can still apply for additional funds, so maybe at least we have it left over. So, make that available to the board. And then we can move on and discuss the.
Do we have a board discussion?
Yeah.
These are the type of grants that we should be applying for, and I think this grant was mentioned last year. But also hopefully that we're going to pursue the other grants like that outdoor fitness, fitness center that I presented to the board, because that's a great opportunity also. It doesn't have to be used right away and installed right away. So there's a lot of grants out there that we need to take advantage of.
Johnson, do you have any questions?
Only question, I don't see it on here, but the answer, I was looking for the answer real quick under, but this doesn't anyway imply that Licking County Park District has anything to do with the park except for providing a grant. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So they're not really, they're not part of the park district, they're not going to have a stake in it, that's why I would make sure of that. Because before, it kind of wanted money, they were part of Licking County, they had to join Licking County Park.
And if you look, there is a list, so they're offering to other cities.
Right, I saw it, yeah.
Based on population, the amount that we could get.
Right. Yeah, I see that back here.
And since Mr. Johnson spoke more than once, I'd like to just say this is similar to what Tascala does, and they've got a great partnership with the Licking County Parks and are really improving that for residents.
I would like to make a motion that I will sign off on the application and apply, and then work with our new administrator, I mean administrator when we hire on this project to try to get the funds for the next five years. Yep.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Shouldn't these grants come to the board? It was the board's prior position that even though PWC grant had to come to the full board, and now it seems like we're just switching positions at leisure.
Well, the reason why I thought I would make the motion for me to work with the administrators because I'm over the park district, that is the area that I'm over, and this would affect the park. So I would want to work with the administrator that we will eventually hire from the township.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes. Okay, keep that. Okay, we have free right. Yeah, she actually got it.
I think we have that. I think we have that.
Okay. 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 We can move on to new, additional new business, request to extend the freeway drive. Make a discussion on that.
Point of order. The special meetings are for agenda items only. That agenda item was for the park district. This is not the park district.
Request to extend freeway drive is on the agenda. That's a part of the Licking County Park District, because they are asking for the extension.
So we're just putting multiple things in a special meeting?
Again, again, freeway drive is a part of the Licking County Park District. So we want to discuss that. So, discussion, Mr. Johnson?
I don't know what we're discussing, whether they're there, but why don't you give us an overview, please?
Okay, I can do that. Freeway drive is like a little area that's kind of a area where they use to, it's in a neighborhood, and the road extends into a drive where some of the utility vehicles will access that area. Right now, it's kind of like a dirt path, and they want to extend it to, so they can access it. And we're talking about maybe putting some gravel there for temporary use, and then eventually putting in, when we do that road over there, when we pave that road, we would like to extend the pavement over into that area. I know Mr. Singleton had a conversation with Kyle. You want to talk more about it or discuss it a little bit there?
Yeah, what they're doing is, the park area that is owned by the TJ Evans Foundation, under the control of Licking County Park District, is a wetland area, and it's limited access. This is going to be basically for access into a parking area that's only going to have 5% spaces for their personnel, for monitoring and taking care of the park. Eventually, maybe some limited area tours, but it's not going to be an open area that's going to be high traffic and a whole lot of traffic. So they were requesting, and they only requested graveling to the property line, but from there on, it's all on them at this point, because it's an undeveloped road, road stops 60 feet short of the property line.
Are you familiar with that, Mr. Trustee Evans?
I think we all should be familiar with it, because we took this up last year and we turned it down.
We did.
And we actually had the schematics of it, and as Mr. Singleton corrected you, that it's for the, it's not for general public use in that. It's for a parking lot that they're creating. They want the road extended to the property line, but as discussed last year, everybody in that neighborhood and other neighborhoods, your property line stops short of your road. So we don't extend the road to your driveway at your property line. It is the responsible of the property owners to bring your driveway to the road. A lot of times, that's 20 foot, sometimes 30 foot, this is a little bit longer. This is exactly what Charles Hagie did, and Mr. Johnson was on the board, when he wanted that extension of a new hall to his, his farmland to the property line, and I, as a resident, objected back then, and it cost, I think, over $13,000. Because again, if you look at the auditor site, the property adjacent to it has about 30 foot that they had to pay for themselves. And that's where I based my position on, that it should be at the cost to the Evans Foundation, albeit it's a, it's a very good foundation, but I think what our action should be equitable to all property owners throughout the township. So again, we turned this down last year. I'm not sure why we're looking at it again, what's changed. I believe it was a unanimous vote. So I would think that they would pay for it, even if it's just gravel, you got to have the proper base, and you've got to get it up to road standards if you're just going to put pavement over it. Again, one, a new hall drive was $13,000, more I think 20 foot. So, I mean, I don't know what the cost is for 60 foot road, but we're talking about getting grants for $70,000 and championing that, but we would easily just spend that here. And I think the park district does have a lot of money, a lot of that, and we just found out that we have a possible loan on Taylor Road for $6,000,000 that nobody was aware of. So we need to watch our funds, and I don't think this is how it works. They want to put gravel down, I think, let them put gravel down, but I don't think it should be at our cost.
Well, what changed was the, they had a different director over there. I guess he wanted to have an opportunity to work with the board, this new board, to see if we would be interested in partnering with them to try to get that area. Again, we know it's only for the employees only. They would only be accessing it during the daytime, so they wouldn't really worry about too much about buffers, that it would interfere with the residents that are there already.
And they're going to, that would be one of my objections, is for employees only, if it was open to all residents of the township, I think it'd be easier to say the expended funds would be justified. But again, I don't think it's a worthy organization, but it seems like it changed on their side, not ours, but now we're changing our position.
I'm not saying we're changing our position. I think we're having a discussion about it.
So the road, the road is a township from plotted, but not accepted. Is that correct? It's a plotted road?
Undeveloped, yes.
Undeveloped, so it's just a dirt base there, there's nothing there.
Where?
And so, they can't, they couldn't do it, could they? Could the park district put that in there?
They also suggested if they, you know, if they request it basically, if they could do the gravel.
So we could.
So I mean, that's, that's a possibility if they do it themselves.
So we could let them put the gravel in, give approval for them to put the gravel themselves, maybe their road.
Right.
Would we have to hold them to certain standards for that, since it is their road, their, not road, but their driveway basically they're putting in?
Well, they said they would maintain it once they've been there. They would be responsible for maintaining it.
Wouldn't it be, Mr. Singleton, just a right of way permit? Just as every other residential property, that you have that 20 foot of drive, to me, it's the same, it's just a little bit longer.
It would be worth within the right of way, so probably.
So we could do the same thing, like give them a right of way permit? Is that correct?
I would make, yeah.
We wouldn't have to spend money on the township, we could give them access, they could do it, their right of way permit.
Yes. I would confirm that motion there. Yes.
The director over there, Mr. Kyle, said he would come next week, that means for our next meeting, so he would come and have a discussion with the board next week, so.
So are we taking any action, or?
No, just want to have a discussion, just so we'll be there, so when he comes up next week, we have some. Okay, so we can move on to new business. Roll call purchase, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, you guys have a quote for a guard rail in your program here? For an amount of $5,625. It was taken out, Don Coop, we got us a quote for it to get it fixed, and so I need approval for this.
Did you make a copy?
Yeah, yes, yes, I did.
Did you make a motion?
So I'll make a motion for approval of $5,625 for guardrail replacement at 909, 9009 Columbia Road.
I'll second. I did have a question, Mr. Johnson. I'm assuming this was due to an accident?
I don't know. I think it was.
Do we get the insurance? Are we going to be reimbursed for this? And the only thing I'd like to say is just because this is a special meeting, we've got to stay on the topics. I think that the title, Road Crew Purchases, is a little generic. We should just have to put as much information for me, as well as the residents, on their guardrail replacement, stuff like that in the future.
So we discuss, we have discussion? So we discuss, we have a discussion? Road call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. I move to accept the letter dated February 9, 2023, regarding WNV LLC agreement entered in by Resolution 22041906 to be terminated effective March 2023. This is, I hope everybody got a copy of Mr. Vance's letter, professional letter that he sent to the board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'll stick away.
Mr. Johnson, do you have a discussion?
No, I'd like to thank Mr. Vance for his service to us and wish him well.
I would like to say thank you, Mr. Vance, for the opportunity that I had in order to work with you. You're very professional. You got a lot of things done. I would like to wish you all the best in your future and thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much.
If there's anything you'd like to say while you're?
Just thank you for the opportunity and wish you well.
I did have a question with this leaving. I understand that you, Mr. McKeon, you mentioned to a reporter that the plan was to have Mr. Vance stay for two, three months after an administrator is hired for transition. Is there a contingency planned now for his apparently surprise, please?
There's no surprise here. He gave us a 30-day notice and that's, that's going to do a 30-day notice.
Well, correct, but previously put out there that he would stay two, three months. And this is not Mr. Vance's choice to go whenever, if we have a contingency to ensure the proper administration.
Well, if you want to ask Mr. Vance, I think he had other plans, so I'm honored that he's got other things going on that he would like to do his 30 days.
That was my?
And President McKeon, appropriate?
Yes.
It says a special agenda, so the only thing you accepted was my 30 days.
That's exactly right. Thank you, Bill.
I appreciate it. And so with the, at the conclusion of that notice, it is concluded, if anything new in the future would have to be redirected to the board trustees.
That's exactly right. Thank you. Call Mrs. Sevierian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay. I would like to turn the meeting over to Trustee Johnson regarding the part-time zoning department.
I'd like to make a motion to hire a part-time zoning inspector. For times when, as an absentee basis, we have John Singleton, our zoning inspector's going to be out on medical leave for a while, so I'd like to move to hire Freddie Latella at a rate of $25 per hour, part-time, on an absentee basis, to assist in the zoning office effective immediately.
I'll second. Discussion?
Ah, yes. Number one, we lost a part-time assistant back in August and there's been no effort to replace them whatsoever, so I'm a little concerned about that. And to bring back Freddie Latella, who's been involved with Mr. Carlisle and the previous board and, and all that, I, I think is, again, moving in the wrong direction. It seems like this township in this area feel that there's only one individual out there for certain, certain jobs and they've got to go to them. And how about putting this out into the public and seeing who, who applies? And our, our volume of construction and just Mr. Sabatino's over there, High Point, 628 apartments alone is going to require a lot of resources and time from our zoning department, so why wouldn't we look for another full-time assistant zoning inspector with This just seems like it's another predetermined move. Let's get the old guard back in here, and I think that is the wrong direction that we should be going in. Advertising, not handpicked people again.
Again, we have a employee that's leaving on medical leave that's going to be off for some weeks, and this is just a temporary situation. And from my understanding, Mr. Latella has worked in this area before, so we need somebody that has a little background. So we're not trying to bring somebody in that we have to train. We don't have the time for the training to happen.
But Mr. Road Call, hold that position also?
Again, I'm still speaking, Mr. Evans. So I would recommend that we move forward to get somebody in here and to make sure that we don't have a lapse in getting things taken care of in this township as far as zoning is concerned.
Okay, and again, there, I, I could name on top, I had another individual like you said, that has the experience, that hasn't been approached, and this, again, is just a handpicked person to fill the position. And we should be putting these out, all board appointments, everything, to let the community serve and others serve.
Road call, Ms. Sevierian?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move?
Sir, ma'am?
I don't have a problem with the litigation, it's a favor.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks, Mrs. Sevierian.
We appreciate that.
I move to approve paying for lunch for the Chad and Jetsy board, no more than $100 per meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to stick with these. Jet boards are unpaid positions. They're volunteering their time and it's in the middle of the day, they move four hours length, 10 to 2, so I think it's a little inappropriate that we help them at least get something to eat during that timeframe.
Mr. Evans?
I have no problem with, for the safety board providing, you know, standard lunches and that, but we've got a lot of important business to address, and these are the things that are added on our amended agenda. It's, it's just not right.
Road call, Mrs. Sevierian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on over to both business. I will turn this over to Jeff in regards to state security discussion.
Actually, I'd like to table this, I'm not quite ready. I haven't had a chance to.
Okay.
On this.
Okay. So we can table that one? All right.
Should we discuss what it's about?
Yep.
I mean, I have no idea. We approved this last meeting, or a couple of meetings ago, and that was being brought up.
This is security over at the garage. Security here now, we have different security at the garage. We have no notification systems over there, just strictly cameras and a little file kiosk thing, sorry, to get in the door or push button to get in the door with the different early gates, a code. So we're looking at other ways to monitor that. That's where all our expensive tools and trucks and stuff are and it's not a break so we have no way of knowing it until we look at the cameras after the fact. So that's what we're working on, and I have not had time to get the gentleman that's going over that.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that this is what I brought up last year and it was blocked, but I really don't think we should be broadcasting our vulnerabilities in public. This should have been a discussion in private. You just announced that, we don't have notifications. You just announced that.
I'm just glad that we're going to move forward to getting some security over there to make sure that's, that's something that we need to address. And I know you had the garage for a year and you never made effort to try to get that as far as getting.
We had a session, we had.
No, you were using.
Ms. McKee, you lied.
No, I did not lie. Okay? We moved from putting the, we wanted to make sure that that's covered over there.
So did I.
No, it's no lie.
You blocked it. And?
So now that we want to move forward to getting it done, I think that this is a good thing that we're going to move forward to get it cut out.
And I think we have honest people in here, so I would trust everybody in here, definitely. Not the biggest thing, do you have it?
Public meeting.
It's a public meeting, that's correct, and everybody's in here is from the public that's out there, look, edit it.
I do not edit public meeting information, I'm sorry.
So that's your recorder? That's your recorder? You have the choice to put it out there.
The, the garage system does need to be addressed. As of now, it's probably overriding illegally. Is that being addressed? We still don't have a records policy and I had to continually buy new hard drives, swap them out, retain the old ones, so that the records were not illegally destroyed. That ability on the authorization of the credit card of that was removed, so that can't be done. So right now, as we speak, those records, unless you did something, since you have control of that now, are being illegally overridden. Have you addressed that?
I've addressed it. This gentleman.
Why, why, let me just say this.
I'm concerned about the.
If you feel that there's a problem right now, Mr. Evans, and people in the room, we, we trust their residents here, and you feel, and you're recording, don't put it out there. Just don't put that recording out there. So if you want to protect the township.
It's going Facebook Live right now.
Again, I just ask you, I'm talking to you, Mr. Evans.
Again, my concern is also the overriding of the records. They should be done with.
So we're just going to?
Yes, and order.
Okay, so we're just going to table it, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
You said you want to table it until we move to. I move to authorize Trustee McKee to execute the amendment to the road maintenance agreement between Etna Township and the City of Pataskla. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans, is there discussion?
Uh, yes, where is that agreement?
We have it.
I don't have it.
Yeah, we have it. Yeah, I know, but we have it.
But you're not going to provide it to me?
Mr. Evans, we're just, if you want to look at it after the meeting, you're more than welcome, but it's just, we already, we voted on it, we've already voted on it. We're just signing it now. That's all it is.
Why, why would you just authorize that license? Question.
Mr.? Do you have something to say, Mr.?
I may.
Okay. Additional discussion? Road call, Mrs. Evans?
Mr. Evans?
Mrs. Evans, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sevierian. I'm sorry.
No, because I haven't been provided a copy.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move Resolution 2302140, with EVO 1 on that one, Ms. Sevierian?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the amendment of the real estate purchase contract with the Langle family. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Discussion, Mr. Evans?
Yes, what does this change? What is the assets of this resolution?
This is just extended, we, um, the resolution, would you like to come forward, Mr.?
Mr. Hodges, I just want, if this is just extending the date or if there's other changes?
Please, thank you, Mr. Hodges.
David Hodges, Attorney for the applicant on this entitlement process ongoing with the Langle farm. I was here back, I don't, I don't quite remember when, to extend this previously. This is just an additional extension to allow us adequate time to work through the Lincoln County planning process, compliance with the subdivision regulations, planning, et cetera. We still don't have our preliminary plan scheduled, and so we need to, we need more time to work through those processes, essentially what this is, to extend it out to the end of the year.
Okay, and then there's the, the issue regarding the sewer capacity law, that's no longer an issue?
Well, as a part of this, as a part of this process, and maybe you all have heard discussion of this, there's a new lift station that's going in up at the north end of the America's Home for Rent property, Refugee Road Lift Station. As a part of that project and the project we are working on, there's going to be a relief sewer that comes down across country, south from Refugee Road, and then west over to 310. That's going to, that's going to rectify the capacity issue that exists on 310 north of Broad Street. This, I don't think this does anything to address any capacity issues on the south side of Broad Street.
Main Street, right?
Main Street, sorry, 40, 40, sorry. So I don't think this does anything to address those issues. I think those are line issues, but this, but, but this does address capacity issues, as far as I understand, for the development of the Langle property, the Yehmich property and other properties up on the north side.
So, so as far as our agreement, because I know that it's been in escrow, Armani, the land.
Correct.
Until there were two, I believe, two basic conditions of sewer capacity, you know, sewer property and then also the planning.
Correct.
So are you saying the sewer capacity is off the table? That's settled now?
It's not, it's not settled because we, because we can't, we, we are not allowed to get into a developer's agreement with the Southwest Lincoln Community Water and Sewer District until we're at the construction plan phase, phase of the development, and you can't get to the construction plan phase until you're through preliminary plan.
So how long are we looking at it? Is this really?
This, this, if, if this isn't real, when I've been at it, whatever, two and a half, three years, I don't know. I believe this is real.
Then it'll be done by this extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do not want to be back in here asking for another one.
I, I agree it needs to be handled, so I was just curious that if, per the terms, that first, first part was met and we're just waiting for the second one?
No, we got both of them, they're still loose.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you move questions here?
No.
Thank you, Attorney Hodges. Thank you all.
Thank you, David.
More discussion? Road call, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Move on over to the fiscal officer report. I move Resolution 23021402 to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I had a question, our fiscal officer previously asked this regarding the Pataskla Chamber of Commerce. This is a PO, do we have to, or make a motion to renew that, join it, anything like that? I didn't see anything else on the, the agenda addressing that.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Evans?
Yes, we have a PO here for Pataskla Chamber of Commerce 2023 membership. I was asking, relating the question that I saw a fiscal officer ask the board regarding if we have to make a motion to renew, join, or anything, because that is not on the agenda also.
I think we did that in the organization meeting, didn't we? I thought we did.
We appointed a representative, we didn't vote to extend or remain or join.
I don't know if we did or not. I know we did vote that we appointed an individual, but I got to find out if we need to make a motion to continue with the contract with them.
And that's what I asked, and what the individual we appointed to was only to the Pataskla Economic Development Committee, it wasn't for the chamber.
That's the case, that's fixed.
Whatever, I agree.
Sir?
If the majority of the board of trustees this evening wants to go ahead and approve the allocation of these funds, that would be one step in that direction, and if additional steps are necessary, you can consider those in your future meetings.
That was what I said.
Do we want to move, take a vote on that, make a motion to do that?
Without an item?
Yep.
So a motion out there right now, the whole thing?
Yeah. So we need to.
Yes, do the whole thing.
But I. But I... Mrs. Verian, did you receive my reimbursement check for the conference?
I did.
Okay.
Because I had it dated for the 7th, so it was voided, and then I re-dated it for the 21st because I wasn't aware the special meeting was going to happen, so you'll get it next week.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Row call?
We need to add the motion to add the chamber to the purchase orders.
Okay, so we made a motion.
So we're...
So I'm not doing that, is it?
Within...
Yeah.
All right.
Row call, Mrs. Verian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payment of the above listed bills for February as shown on the payment listing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes, do you have a question on the Ohio Insurance Services? It's the last warrant on the page 10692. Includes division insurance. This board improperly increased the benefits to the board and fiscal officer. Our prosecutor stated that it was an increase in benefits, and I'm concerned that we're paying for benefits that violate Ohio Revised Code as we cannot increase our own benefits. I'm concerned about that. And there's no action on it whatsoever. We can't just ignore it. We're already, you know, a month and a half into the year, and we're still getting these improper benefits. Then additionally, I do see Ice Miller on here. It does look like they are finally charging the fee that they were, that was approved. It's a reduced fee now, but per Kit Miller, he appears to be going back through the prior invoices to see what kind of credit we're due. I just want to make sure that the chairperson pursues that. We got an over $4,000 credit when I brought this up with brochures and grigs. So we got to be mindful of our contracts, what we're being charged. And I have no problem with fees being increased over time. However, it's got to go through proper board action. So that's another one, and then same thing with brochures and, while that's not on air. We got to stick to the approving limits of these things.
Trustee Johnson, discussion?
Well, one other thing, there is a warrant here for the Pataskla Chamber of Commerce, an actual fee. Is that proper to pay the fee before it's authorized to join, rejoin? I just noticed that.
Basically, it's approving the allocation, and so the fee is paid when the check is cut. And the check needs to be held until a policy decision associated with membership needs to be made. The majority of the trustees can direct the fiscal officer to assist them with that. If they feel comfortable going ahead and paying the check and then coming back and doing the membership, because that's the right thing to do, you can communicate that as well.
I would make a motion to withdraw the payment to Pataskla Chamber of Commerce until the matter is properly resolved.
Do you want to withdraw that, Mr. Evans?
That was my motion?
Yeah.
And should, and should we vote as a board to renew that? Just as per a county or any other special meeting? We have a meeting next week.
So we'll just take it to next meeting? This is, we just want to get it...
What's about proper policy procedures?
Ratify. You didn't get a second on that, so I guess we can go ahead and do a row call, Mrs. Verian?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Announcement and trustee comments are limited to three minutes. Mr. Johnson, would you please? You have any comments?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, a couple of things. It looks like we're, we have an executive session here on the union negotiations. I'm glad we're finally doing that. It's been one year, and there hasn't been a single update to this board. I've asked numerous times about this, so I'm glad to see that we're going to be discussing it, but I'm kind of wondering what it's about. And then regarding the administrator position, I have no idea what the plan is, who we're going to interview, if we're interviewing. Even those that were interviewed that Friday at the special meeting were kept from me. And I even made a public records request that is being ignored. This is not the way to administer a township in a transparent way, working with the board. Everybody says, why can't you work together? I'm trying. Some don't want to, and this is just part of it. Why can't another board member know who we interviewed Friday? There were two individuals. I don't even know who we're interviewing today. Nothing was shared. It seems like all this is just predetermined. And for no updates on the union negotiation for a year, when I've been asking repeatedly for us to go in an executive session to discuss, it's just wrong. It should be a collaborative effort.
We're going to go ahead and move over to executive session. ORC 121.22G for preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiation or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Discussion limited to three minutes, please, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Evans?
It's about time.
Row call, Mrs. Verian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Time is 6:54.